I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence, please?
Counsel President Sturz.
Here.
Counselor Coats.
Here.
Counselor Shamp.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Sturz.
Here.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
All members are present, we have a call.
Thank you. I have no knowledge of any individuals wishing to address counsel. We can move on to committee reports.
Alright.
Oh, sorry. That was out of my strain here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counsel President Sturz. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
I was gonna wing it, just change it there, you guys kinda bounced on that for me, thank you. Alright, we still have nobody in there in our audience, so let's move on to committee reports.
Alright, we'll kick things off with a street committee meeting, we met on November 7th. Myself, Scott, and Rick were present, staff included, Chief Torbett, Mr. Richardson, and then we had a police department intern that sat in, and that was kind enough to take notes. We also had visitors to this committee meeting, it was that popular, Larry Fruth and Dave Moore came in to chat with us about the parking on 400th Block of Marshall Street. Just a quick summary, somebody brought a concern about the parking on the 400th Block of Marshall Street, Chief Torbett was kind enough to send a survey out to those folks on that block. We received those results, and then we had a meeting in regards to those results. And a majority of the folks there asked that there not to be any changes to the parking on the 400th Block of Marshall Street. And, you know, we heard from Mr. Fruth and Mr. Moore sharing their opinions at night that they would like to have no changes there as well. So the committee decided not to have any recommendations for counsel tonight, therefore leaving no action being taken. The other issue before the street committee was a handicap parking spot in the area of the Congregational Church on Clinton Street. We asked at a previous committee meeting that Dennis Richardson have his Public Works folks evaluate whether or not there is a room in the municipal parking lot in close proximity to the church. There is, there would be, but we're provided an aerial map, and where that spot would be within our municipal parking lot would be an awfully long walk to the church. The church we saw on aerial map had some grassy area that if they decided to put a handicap parking spot closer to their structure, that might be more accessible for those folks. So again, on this issue, the committee decided to take no action on that issue as well. No recommendations, thanks counsel.
Building grounds.
Building grounds also on Tuesday, November 8th. And we were met by representatives of Grize Rose Insurance, and also Larry Coaster representing the PEP insurance that we currently have. I think Jamie has decided to go with that specific insurance again. No action would need to be taken on that. And then there was more discussion on smoking in the parks. After discussion, again, on basically the same things, we asked Keith Torbett if he would contact, what is her name?
Sharon Moore.
Sharon Moore, to see if she had any sort of ordinance-type thing written up. And then we would meet again to make a decision on something like that. But there is no action as of this point, waiting on information from Keith.
What you did send?
I sent you the policy she had, she didn't have an ordinance available, so I guess I was waiting to hear back from Building and Grounds if they wanted me to search farther for an ordinance, or if just the policy would just survive.
That policy, there is really no way to enforce anything like that.
I can do some further searching for actual legislation for an enforcement piece of it.
So no action in Building and Grounds.
No.
Moving on to personnel committee.
Personnel committee met November 7th, and we do have some action, we're taking action.
Alright.
We had made a recommendation to add a fire department executive assistant position to our previous approved classification and compensation plan. So this position came about after that plan was already in process and had been approved. So the executive assistant position to the chief had been approved, and Chief Sluter went through that process with Clemens Nelson. And so the recommendation that we bring forward tonight is just to add that to the already approved plan.
I move that the recommendation to be accepted.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Shamp and second by Counselor Coats. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yeah.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
She's probably real, she was trying to catch me.
Okay, so more classification. And we need a utility committee.
Yes, we bring forth some action tonight as well. Utility committee met in regards to three issues, let's see, back on November 16. The first one resonates here in town, Sherri LaRue visited with us in reference to an extremely high water bill. Her bill averages between $27 and $35 a month, and she received a $650 water bill. So she came in with the concern as to where the water went, where it came from, things like that. She was told that over the month, about 118,000 gallons of water went through her meter. That's an extremely large amount of water. The committee, along with Dennis Richardson, we brainstormed as to where there might be some possibilities where that water came from. We were thinking that may be a backup system for the sub-pump that was, involved water pressure, may been the culprit. We sent, actually during the committee meeting, Dennis was kind enough to send one of his staff to her house with Sherri LaRue to check that sub-pump, to see if it was in fact, if there was in fact a water backup. And I see here on the notes, results of that visit, that there was no evidence of a water backup system for the sub-pump. So that committee, that issue, I don't know if it's something that legislatively is in place for Jamie's office to take care of on her own, or if another meeting is required. But that was the extent of our meeting in regards to that issue on that day. The committee then ventured into water notices a while back, we had a citizen come in, talked to counsel about water notices that the public receives, she resides in a trailer park. When water notice is generated from the city, it goes to her manager, her manager then would be responsible to post to her residents or their residents. This residence concern was that there was a delay in going to the manager, then to the residents, in reference to receiving notice of any water abnormalities. So the committee talked about what we could do possibly different in the future. As we just completed campaign season, we've often received campaign literature in the mail marked resident, it goes to all post office receptacles. And we thought maybe that would be something that we could do when water abnormalities would exist. Mayor thought that it'd be a good time, maybe once a year, to do a mailer, to not only mention the folks that don't receive those water alerts, how they can receive those water alerts, but also other issues such as snow removal, grass clippings, and other things that the administration would like to relay, right, is that accurate, Mayor?
Yeah, there's quite a few different things, not only with our citizens, but also with our business owners, that we've been kicking around, the chief and I have, about maintenance and things, so this would fall right into that category, to be able to let the citizens know different routes, to be able to get the information, so it's perfect.
Yeah, I think Mrs. Coats was, you know, that small percentage within our community that doesn't have a computer, doesn't have a phone, that receives text alerts or anything like that, how do we get those alerts to her, and mailing might be the best route, so.
So maybe once a year, we could send this information out. Communication has always been, the one thing that we've said, it's been hard to get to our citizens, how do we get the communication out about different things that are happening? Knows, and the water bill has always been on route to our users, but. Does she not have a phone? She did not have a phone? She did not have a computer. So she couldn't get access to our website. But if she wanted to know, if she was being in that action, she can always get self-addressed envelopes and a stamp, and we can always mail it to her. That is one way, that's the old school way that they used to do it in the past, if they needed to know. But that, how do they know that? We can send out one mail a year to let the citizens know, this is one way for those of them, people who do not have computers, access to our webpage. This is one way. So if you would like to be notified on certain things, and removal of snow, do not blow your grass into the streets, do not break your leaves into the streets. Reasons why, this is what it's doing to our systems and things like that, it's just a good education. What's yours?
I think that's a direction that we might try to help Mrs. Coats, help our community. The last thing is the thing that I have the least amount of understanding on, so Rick, feel free to chime in, Dennis, feel free to help me out. The county was looking to the city to tie in to our sewer system, would that be accurate? Okay. They have a sewer issue out towards the airport. The commissioners came to the city and asked if they could tie in to our sewer system. We, the committee really relied upon Dennis Richardson and Dave Murray's input in this regard. It looks like there'd be about nine, let's see, as the ad said, there'd be a package plant serves nine users, talking about a two-inch or less pipe running from their troubled area to our tie-in, does that sound right, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. The one thing that the committee, I think, felt strongly about was that allowing this is great, but we didn't want our city workers to provide maintenance on that run. So through it all, the committee is recommending tonight that counsel accept the proposal to allow the county to tie into our sewer system, with the understanding that the city, the public work staff of the city of Wausau provide no maintenance to that run. Dennis, fill in it all, Rick, that's all I have to offer on that topic, if I missed any highlights, feel free.
Rick, you were kind of ahead of voice to opinion.
Well, it's been our policy in the past, from what I've understood, to accept any sewer tie-ins outside the city. And I think part of my concern is that opens the doors for anywhere where we have a sewer adding to our wastewater plant, and that kind of thing. I know we will bill them at 150%, which will help pay for that kind of thing. Plus the fact that, I was quite concerned about the maintenance, because I don't know that anybody out there in the county is, and having worked for the city, I know that I've had to help out with things like that outside the city in the past. Also, I don't think it's a, I would much rather see a sewer system run up County Road J versus a pump system up to that point, it just seems like way too far for, it's not something that can happen to have a concern. That was my concern.
But that is our recommendation, thank Mayor. And you is busy there, Shane.
Holy cow, yes. I'm taking the rest of your off. Thank you, Counsel President.
Okay, so quite a few things to, so we need to make a recommendation. Yeah, most recommendations.
Not second to the motion, this is just a recommendation for the county to hook on to, hook on to, where at, Dennis, where we hook, where would they hook on at?
Would hook into the head end of the gravity sewer at the intersection of County Road J and 108, by the brown lane.
So we're gonna get a forced main to that point, right?
Yes.
Motion moved by Counselor Coats and second by Counselor Chamberlain. Is there any more discussion? Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
No.
Five yeas, one nay, motion carries.
Okay, and that is it for committee reports. Let's move on to our department heads. Chief Sluter.
The only thing we got, fire departments got their support from the Red Brown Fairgrounds this Saturday. Other than that, no new happenings or nothing reported by the department.
Do you have any tickets on?
Yes, we do.
Do ya?
Yep, the Aramal.
Okay, good. How long are you gonna have those tickets? Till the end, you gonna have them at the door?
Yes, we will.
Okay, good. Chief Coats?
Well, between the utility committee and the mayor, he's still silent, I thought, Rick, because I was gonna remind people about the leaves, not blowing them into the street.
Yeah, seen that.
Several piles up there, but this Public Works has been very good about getting them cleaned up promptly. And also with our first snowfall, comes a reminder to make sure that you get your sidewalks cleared off after any snowfall, and also about parking, if we do call it level one, we ask that everyone remove their car from the city so that the Public Works can get them cleaned up. A couple other things, Wednesday night, we will be having extra road patrol in conjunction with the other police departments and the sheriff's department in the county, it's typically busiest night of the year, and we want everyone to have a good time, but not too good of a time. Be safe and get a designated drug. And finally, mark your calendar for December 9th, 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, coffee with cop at Red Ramble. It should be coming out on our Facebook page, as well as Red Ramble, it's anytime. It'll be.
A Friday?
A week from, two weeks from Friday? Week from Friday, two weeks from Friday, thank you.
What time is it?
7:30 AM to 8:30 AM.
Thank you. Dennis?
One more down, if you show up, I'll buy you something.
How that works.
Not a lot to add tonight, obviously the committee work is then discussed. We are out for bids for the annual treatment chemicals at the water and wastewater treatment plants. Those open up on 12/6, I believe, that's an annual deal. Covered leaves, Public Works guys are doing a great job keeping up with the leaves. Christmas decorations are up, they should have been, they should have been completed by the end of today. They've only had luck to do with the little trees that we put up at the south end of Fulton Street. Couple other minor details, other than that, working on the budget, which are the finance committee meeting will be coming soon. I said it, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for this?
Oh, yeah, I do, cool, where are we at, in the pool? I don't know, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine, we intend to go back out to bids, such that they will open sometime after the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Jane?
Well.
Busy one.
Besides the insurance that we mentioned earlier, I've been working with our health insurance, got some preliminary numbers in on Friday, hoping to get another updated amount, number from our current carrier by the end of the day tomorrow, so I'll have better information to provide to the employees and which type of coverage they'd like to receive, and hopefully be able to incorporate those numbers into our budget and have it to the finance committee soon. That's all I have tonight.
Tom?
Two things, I guess, we're continuing on our march forward in the implementation of the compensation plan and the evaluation process, we had a stimulating seminar last week on the process for conducting the evaluations.
Yes, we did.
And.
He invested, oh.
But we'll be meeting, we're planning on meeting tomorrow at 8:30, the department heads to go over portions of the evaluation form to make sure we're all on the same page, so that as employees are evaluated, there won't be, we can try to eliminate the best we can, any inconsistencies with respect to some of the subjectivity that's involved. And I think we've discussed having, this first year, having an initial evaluation process in March to give everybody a trial run, so the employees see how the process works, and so the, those doing the evaluating can go through the process, and then having a more final and complete evaluation in September, which then would be the product that will be used for evaluating merit increases for 2018. So we're, as I say, continuing on that march forward, and just to remind everybody, we decided table, we have that meeting at 8:30. And actually, two more things, one is that we, as we've discussed, I think we'd like to ask the Safety and Code Committee to set up a meeting time that we can get out to the public in connection with the changes in the state law effective the first of the year with respect to what's been defined as utility vehicles and slow-moving vehicles and under-speed vehicles. The idea being to give anyone interested in participating in the discussion, or at least hearing the discussion by the committee, a chance to attend. So we'd be asking for that meeting. And then thirdly, also just wanna mention, the committee didn't make any recommendations on the insurance, PEP insurance, but I think this is our standard custom, we have a resolution tonight for consideration on an emergency basis to accept, or to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with PEP against this issue. I think that's what I have.
We have the Safety and Code, now, we're talking about it, they'd kinda like to have it where like everyone's school or somebody can come.
You, Shane.
I'm sure.
Scott.
Jeff, Scott. Not with the brothers, huh? Let's do this, yep. I know, yeah. Now, who's the chair?
I am.
Okay. Well, I'll meet whenever you'd like, Jeremy.
Who's your name, who's your name? When did they? What did they want?
If you're dealing with school people, you're probably gonna have to go.
After, after the next council meeting?
Yeah.
So I work at, say, at 5:30, or December 5th?
Yeah, 5:30.
That way we have short council meeting.
You can't forget that one, can you?
I can't forget that one, I'll be here.
I don't know, let's see.
Is that it, Tom?
Yes.
Anything else for Tom?
Yeah, we'll put a, we'll do a little blurb for the city website, and then maybe the other websites that we have, and then we'll, I'll personally contact the school folks and let them know the meeting. And I'll get, yes, and I'll get the committee a memo.
What's the lawsuit?
Excuse me, please.
Alright, after that?
I may not be done.
Okay, let's move on to first reading. Resolution 2016-27, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with public entities pool for casualty liability, fire and property damage insurance, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency on Resolution 2016-27.
I'll second that.
Motion moved by Counselor Coats and second by Counselor Shamp. Is there any discussion? Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage?
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counsel President Sturz. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Coats?
Yes.
Counsel Shamp?
Yes.
Counsel Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, Resolution 2016-27 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Okay, thank you. Second reading, Resolution 2016-22, authorizing the mayor to enter into the city-county dog services contract with the border commissioners of Home County.
Motion to suspend the rules for three readings on Resolution 2016-22. Second.
Motion moved by Counsel Shamp and second by Counsel Sturz, is there any discussion? Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counsel Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Coats?
Yes.
Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage? Second.
Motion moved by Counsel President Sturz and second by Counselor Chamberlain. Counsel President Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Coats?
Yes.
Counsel Shamp?
Yes.
Counsel Sturz?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, Resolution 2016-22 passes on suspension and will be in effect in 30 days.
Resolution 2016-23, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the agreement for the end.
to the agreement for the indigent to commence services in the county court with Fulton County Commissioners.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for three readings on resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion moved by Consul Coast and second by Consul Schamp. Is there any discussion? Consul Coats?
Yes.
Consul Schamp?
Yes.
Consul President Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consul Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage? Second.
Motion moved by Consul Chamberlain and second by Consul Sturts. Consul Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consul Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Frye?
Yes.
Consul Schamp?
Yes.
Consul Coats?
Yes.
Consul President Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three passes on suspension and will be in effect in thirty days.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fulton County for bail bondsman for Fulton County Court, Western District.
Make a motion to suspend the rules for three readings on resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion moved by Consul Chamberlain and second by Consul Coast. Is there any discussion? Consul Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consul Coats?
Yes.
Consul President Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Schamp?
Yes.
Consul Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Final passage? Second.
Motion moved by Consul Schamp and second by Consul Sturts. Consul Schamp?
Yes.
Consul Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Chamberlain?
Yes.
Consul Frye?
Yes.
Consul Coats?
Yes.
Consul President Sturts?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four passes on suspension and will be in effect in thirty days.
Under new business, we need a motion to give each full-time employee a one-point contract with Department Head of the Chambers Conference.
Okay. I'll make them over here. You want me?
Second.
Motion moved by Consul President Sturts and second by Consul Frye. Consul President Sturts?
Yes.
Consul Frye?
Yes.
Consul Sturts?